It is 7:01 PM and four of 50 voters being present. And Town Clerk Jaclyn Morris having confirmed that the warrant has been properly posted by the constable, this meeting will now come to an end. Many individuals have worked extremely hard over the past year to bring us to this moment, but for their efforts over the last two months, I would particularly personally like to acknowledge Town Clerk Jaclyn Morris and Administrator Assistant Toni Abril, our new Town Administrator Jeremy Marsette, Assistant Town Administrator Diane Morris and her Administrator Assistant Jeanne Guthrie, Mike Klein of DSCTE, and finally, the Dover Sherburne Facilities Director Sean McGee, who's been particularly helpful with setup of the auditorium and coordination of our electronic needs for the evening. There are, of course, many others who live in town. Excuse me. There are, of course, many others who have contributed to making this meeting happen, and we are lucky to live in a town where both residents and non-resident employees contribute every day to making Sherburne a wonderful town that it is. Few housekeeping details to begin. If you wish to leave the auditorium for any reason, please do so through the doors at the rear. If you leave the auditorium, you must leave your clicker and ballot with one of the officials at one of the registration tables where you came in. If you leave but plan to return to the meeting, ask for a pass as you leave so that you can reclaim your ticket, voted card, and ballot. Please set your cell phones to courtesy mode, and if you must take a call, please leave the area through the rear doors as unobtrusively as possible. We always welcome non-voters to our town meeting. If you are a non-voter, you should have received a name tag to wear, and you must sit in the non-voter section located at the rear of the auditorium. Finally, and most importantly, please keep in mind the importance of stability in all public discourse. We should all assume in others the same good intentions we hold ourselves, and we must treat one another with the respect and goodwill with which we would ourselves like to be treated. I want to make a few introductions here. The motions this evening will be in the end. If I call your name, if you would just raise your hand in case people are not familiar with whom you are. Motions this evening will be initiated by Advisory Committee Chair Dan Sickel, Committee Vice Chair Steve Sae, and Committee Member Jane Materazzo. All seated here on stage to my right, my name right. Also seated on stage to my near right are our Town Council, Heather White, of the Treaty of Associates, and Town Clerk, Jaclyn Morris. Seated on stage to my far right are the members of the Select Board, Chair Jeff Waldron, Vice Chair Marian Neutren, and Members Paul Lorenzis, Derek Johnson, and George Moore. Present down front here in the audience are Town Administrator Jeremy Marsette. Actually, I guess Jeremy's up there. Whatever. Assistant Town Administrator Diane Morris. Diane, where's Diane? Town Treasurer Heidi Doyle. Town Finance Director and Accountant Deb Seifren. Superintendent of Schools, Bill McQuaid. Is he up here?
He's looking back.
Okay. Oh, great. Okay. And with her, School Business Administrator John Vertori. Also in the audience this evening, I've been told that Sherburne State Senators here, Becca Ralston. To begin this evening's business, Advisory Chair Dan Sickel and Select Board Chair Jeff Waldron both have a few brief remarks to share. Mr. Sickel, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mary. Good evening. Thanks for coming this evening. As the Chair of the Advisory Committee, I wanted to take a minute to explain just a bit about the work of advisory this past year and to acknowledge and thank those who have made it happen. I realize many of you are aficionados of all things Sherburne and know all about the Advisory Committee, but for those perhaps who don't, here's a little bit of basic background. Members of the committee are appointed by the Town Moderator, and our charge, as described on the town's website, is providing information and recommendations on all matters of business within the Articles of Any Town Meeting Law, including the Annual Omnibus Budget and capital budgets. This work this year spanned over 16 regular evening meetings, all on Zoom, between last August and March. And at those meetings, we evaluated budget and capital requests from every department in town, including schools, and all the proposed warrant articles. In addition, of course, the committee met for the all-day Advisory Public Hearing on Saturday, March 18th. If any of that intrigues you, and I'm sure it intrigues many of you, the meetings are open, and I'd encourage you to come to our meetings when the next budget season starts up at the end of the summer. The outcome of that work is the advisory report that went out to everyone a couple of weeks ago. And as you read, the report provides an overview of the town's budget situation, background on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024, and the committee's recommendations to a town meeting on budget, capital requests, and every warrant article. While committee members in our meetings did not always agree, which really is to be expected, we had many collegial and thoughtful discussions during our regular meetings and at the public hearing, and that's what provided the inputs for the recommendations in the report. And we hope, we all hope that you find that report and recommendations helpful. I would like to acknowledge and thank members of the committee who did all of that work this past year, including the committee's Vice Chair Steve Sae, Lassim Basali, Peter Gallatano, Steve Jeremiah, Jane Materazzo, Marilyn Smith, Natalie Weir, and Mike Hinton. A special thanks to Peter Gallatano, Jane Materazzo, and Steve Sae, who had served on the committee for six years and are now term limited and will be stepping down. For those of us who are continuing, we will miss your feeling, insight, and good judgment. So, back to you, Mary. Thank you for the opportunity to make some remarks.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Waldron?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I promised that I would follow FDR's three rules of speech, to be, which are peace, sincere, be brief, and be seated. So remember that in your speech giving. I want to reiterate, Jeremy Marsette's our new Town Administrator, who started in January, is the meeting here up front, so if you haven't introduced yourself, he's really gotten up to speed quickly and is still in many areas in town, including preparing the warrant. And I too want to thank all the department heads and boards of committees for preparing all the operating budgets and capital budgets and the warrants that you're considering tonight, because there's really many iterations of lots of review and challenges that they endured to get to this point, which there are probably many who know, so I want to thank them all. And I want to recognize two people in particular. The first is George Moore, who is sitting up here with him down. He's served on the Select Board for six years and I think advisory for six years also. Pretty much if George and I walked into a meeting room and one of the other wasn't in there, we knew we were in the wrong room. Anyway, but he's also stepping down this year, so I want to thank him for all the power he's devoted to the town. And the second is Madam Moderator, Mary Wolf, who's rigorous addition to detailed organization, keeps us straight past and by, and ensures a well-run town meeting. Takes a lot of work to do, and she's been doing it for years, so I really want to thank Mary for all her work. And then my last point is, which many of you are probably aware of, and my last, the Library Ribbons Coven ceremony is this Saturday, April 29th, at 11:00 AM, so hopefully you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Now, I actually have a question that I have not asked before, but I would like to ask tonight. Could you raise your hand if you are, if this is your first town meeting in Sherburne? Ah, that's great. I'm thrilled to see so many new people here. That's wonderful. So, welcome to you. And that leads right into the fact that since there are new people, you may or may not be familiar with the procedures that we use to run this meeting, so I'm going to review those now, and hopefully at the end of it, it will all be clear. Our goal is to conduct the evening's business in a fair, orderly, and predictable manner that will allow all to be heard while ensuring that the meeting moves along without unnecessary delays. The agenda for this meeting is the warrant, which was prepared by the Select Board and is contained in the Advisory Committee's report to the town, which was mailed to each household and posted on the town's website. The deliberations we will conduct for each item of the warrant will be initiated by a motion and a second on the Advisory Committee. Debate will follow, and then a vote. Debate on some articles will begin with a five-minute or up to five-minute presentation by the proponent of the article, who has previously followed the presentation request. Presenters will use the microphone here in the front. Following any formal presentations, I will open the floor to all others who wish to speak to the motion currently on the floor. To speak on a motion, you must be recognized by the moderator. To be recognized, please step to either the microphone here below the stage, not the one with the music stand, but the other one, or to the one at the rear center of the auditorium. When you reach the microphone, please state your name and address and immediately begin your comment or question. Please do not approach the mic until there are only two other people and nine ahead of you. I'd also like to take this opportunity to mention to everyone that when you get to the mic, if you have notes, please make sure that they are not between your mouth and the microphone, because that interferes with the sound. Some people tell me that's very important, that you speak directly into the mic. Comments must be relevant to the motion at hand, and while comments must be limited to two minutes, please keep them as brief as possible. Please comment only if you have new information to add to what has already been said. You may speak a second time once everyone has had the opportunity to speak once, but again, please, speak only if you have new information that moves the debate forward. This is probably a good time for me to note that this year, it would be especially desirable for us to finish our meeting tonight in one night. If we have to come back the second night, the entire operation will have to move to the gym, and that will bring with it logistical issues that we would very much like to avoid. So please, feel comfortable in your debate, but please keep all your remarks relevant to moving the debate along and as brief as possible. We also have a timekeeper here in the front row, who will signal with a red card that the speaker is within 10 seconds of the time limit, either five minutes for a formal presentation or two minutes for debate or discussion. I ask all speakers to be aware of that red card, and when you see it, please finish up what you were saying. I intend to be fair but firm in enforcing time limits, and I ask you to be gracious and considerate of your neighbors by winding up before I would need to intervene. All alternative amendments to motions must be submitted in writing to the Town Clerk. Forms for this purpose are available for Megan Burns. Megan, could you raise your hand? Megan's up there. Megan, no more than, she will give you the forms that you need. No more than two amendments can be on the floor at the same time. A vote is first taken on any amendments to the motion and then on the main motion itself. If more than one amendment is on the floor and the amendments include number of units or length of time, the largest number of units and the longest length of time will be considered first. Consent agendas. Again, here, in the hope of limiting the duration of this meeting, we will be using consent agendas to dispense with separate motions, debates, and votes on articles for which funding is straightforward and that we predict from past experience are likely to have, either unanimously or inherently unanimously. For each consent agenda, there will be a single motion and a single vote, and there will be no debate on motion. If anyone desires to comment on or has a question about one of the articles contained in this consent agenda, you may call a hold on that article when I read its title. And as we do with the reading of the omnibus budget, I will remove that article from the consent agenda, and we will vote it separately, following the vote on the non-held articles, with the opportunity for full debate. None of the articles in the consent agenda have an impact on the FY 2024 omnibus budget. This evening, we will have two consent agendas. The first consent agenda comprises Article One and Articles Three through Six. These appear on the warrant every year. The second consent agenda comprises Articles Twenty through Twenty-Three, which are bylaw housekeeping articles. Again, anyone wishing to discuss a particular article in a consent calendar simply needs to call a hold when I read the title of that article, and I will set it aside for discussion in separate room after all non-held articles are voted. A last procedural point. I will read only the number of each article and a title that summarizes that article. The full text of each article appears in the Advisory Committee Report, as does Advisory's recommendation. We will be using electronic voting at this evening's meeting. When you checked in this evening, you received a handset to be used for electronic voting. As you leave, please deposit your handset in the boxes provided at the exits. Be assured that each vote you cast will be completely anonymous; there is no record of which handset is issued to which voter. As to the mechanics of voting with the handsets, each eligible voter has a response card keypad. For each vote, push the button with the number that corresponds with the vote you wish to cast. One A for I, yes. Two B for no, no. If you push the wrong button, don't worry about it. You do not need to delete a vote to correct it. The last button you push before voting is closed is the vote that will register. You will receive automatic feedback when your vote is recorded. A successful yes vote will show a green light and one A on the LCD screen. A successful no vote will show a green light and two B on the LCD screen. If your vote does not register, you will see a red light and a circle with a line through it on the screen. If you get a red light or no light at all, please raise your hand, and a poll worker will bring you a new handset and collect the non-functional one. You may begin voting as soon as discussion has closed, but when I announce "Please vote now," a countdown clock will appear on the screen, and you will have 10 seconds to finalize your vote. During that time, you may change your vote simply by pressing the other button from your original choice. Remember, the last button you push before voting is closed is the vote that will register. When the countdown clock reaches zero, all votes are locked, and the results will appear on the screen. For articles where a two-thirds vote is required, the results will show first S numbers and then will toggle to percent, so that you will be assured that the call by the moderator is correct. One final vote, one final round. Only votes cast are counted, so adding the yes votes and no votes may produce different votes from article to article. This does not mean that there is something wrong; it means only that some voters chose to abstain on a particular article, or have left, or additional voters have entered the auditorium. Again, if your handset fails in some way, please raise your hand, and a poll worker will bring you a new one and collect the non-functional one. Let's try a couple of sample votes. The question here is about our upcoming 350th anniversary of the town. You should assume that there has been discussion about the question, and that discussion is now closed. So I ask you to please vote now. Sherburne will celebrate its 350th anniversary in 2025. Wrong. The anniversary will be celebrated in 2024. Trick question. And so the motion would fail. Next question. Does Sherburne have more than 3,000 voters? Pretending that we have debated this question and the debate is now closed, I ask you to We have over 3,000 voters in town. I think Jaclyn could tell us the exact, 3,200. All right. Okay. You got this. Now, as we begin the legislative part of our meeting, there is a preference this evening to consider routine and likely non-controversial articles first, using consent agenda. Specifically, before, actually, before I continue, everyone's flicker is working correctly? Except it gave me the right answer, right? Specifically, Article One, Annual Report, and Articles Three through Six, OPEC contributions, cemeteries, revolving funds, and stabilization funds, will be addressed as a consent agenda. This is at the discretion of the lottery. Additionally, there is a preference that Articles Twenty through Twenty-Three, these are bylaw housekeeping articles, be moved forward to follow Article Six of the previous consent agenda and be addressed as consent agenda itself. While addressing these articles as consent agenda is at the discretion of the lottery, advancing these articles to an earlier position on the agenda requires a two-thirds vote. If the advancement is moved and passed, Article Two, omitted from the first consent agenda, will follow Article Twenty-Three, and the remaining articles on the warrant will be considered in order. This slide shows the proposed order for addressing tonight's articles. So we will have Consent Agenda One, that will contain Article One, Article Three, Article Four, Article Five, and Article Six, and if the advancement passes, that would be followed by Consent Agenda Two, which would be Articles Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, and Twenty-Three. Following those two consent agendas will be Article Two, supplementals, Article Seven, the omnibus budget, Article Eight through Article Nineteen. They will just follow on in the order that they appear on the warrant. To that end, I am asking for a motion to advance Articles Twenty through Twenty-Three to follow the consent agenda containing Articles One and Articles Three through Six, including any held articles.
I move that Articles-
Mr. Sickel?
I move that Articles Twenty through Twenty-Three be moved forward to immediately follow the consent agenda that includes Articles One and Articles Three through Six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would ask you to vote now on allowing Articles Twenty-Three, Twenty-Three All right, yeah. To begin with the consent calendar for Article One and Articles Three through Six. Mr. Sickel?
I move that Articles One and Articles Three through Six be considered together as consent agenda articles, where such articles are routine and typically approved without significant debate, and with such articles moved for favorable action as set forth in the Advisory Report and with the following additional information. On Article Three, OPEC Trust Fund, that $100,000 from free cash in the treasury be transferred to the OPEC Liability Trust Fund. And on Article Four, Cemeteries, that $43,000 be transferred from the Cemetery Enlargement Fund for the purposes set forth in the warrant.
Article Five?
Article Five, Revolving Funds for Fiscal Year 2024 Expenditure Limits, Council on Aging Revolving Fund, $75,000, Word of Health Revolving Fund, $20,000, Town Forest Revolving Fund, $35,000, Farm Pond Revolving Fund, $168,000, Ambulance Revolving Fund, $205,000, Elder Housing Revolving Fund, $400,000, Parks and Recreation Revolving Fund, $350,000, DPW Fire Police and Facilities Fund, $50,000. Article Six, Stabilization Funds, that the following amounts from free cash in treasury be transferred to General Stabilization Fund, $50,000, Capital Stabilization Fund, $155,000.
Second.
Okay. I can now read the number and title of each article in this consent agenda. If you wish to consider an article separately, please call a hold when I read the article's number and name, and I will remove it from the consent agenda, and we will address it separately after all unheld articles in the consent agenda are voted. Article One, Annual Reports. Article Three, OPEC Trust Fund. Article Four, Improvement Embellishment of Cemeteries. Article Five, Revolving Funds. Article Six, Stabilization Funds. The consent, I hear your votes. The consent agenda for Articles One and Three through Six has been moved and seconded. There is no debate on a consent agenda. I'm sorry. Billy? We're moving, not to that. We're moving down to Slide 33. Slide 20, we're going to slide, we're going to vote on this, and then we're moving to Yes, we're going to put it right on the, the voting slide. Sorry.
So this is our board?
Yes.
Do you go now, or do you have a couple that aren't working?
Oh. It may not be working because it's not ready yet. Just let me know when we're ready to go and vote. Okay, consent agenda, number one, Article One and Articles Three through Six. Please vote now. Okay. Motion passes. Yes. Yes. Yeah. So the number... One thirteen to four. So we're now moving to Slide Twenty-two. It will be the second consent agenda. Yes. Yes. So this is now the consent agenda comprising the four housekeeping articles that were... The agenda was advanced from the back of the warrant up here. Now take a motion on addressing that. Ms. Mademoiselle.
I move that Articles Twenty to Twenty-three be considered together as consent agenda articles where such articles are routine and typically approved without significant debate and with such articles moved for favorable action is set forth in the advisory report.
Second.
Articles Twenty through Twenty-three are being addressed as a consent agenda. I will now read the number and title of each article. And if you wish to consider an article separately, please call hold when I read that article's number and name and I will remove it from the consent agenda and we will address it separately after all unheld articles on the consent agenda are voted. Article Twenty, Accept the Numbering, Restyling of the Current General Bylaws. Article Twenty-One, Accept the Numbering, Restyling of the Current Zoning Bylaws. Article Twenty-Two, Adopt Housekeeping Changes to the Current General Bylaws. Article Twenty-Three, Adopt Housekeeping Changes to the Current Zoning Bylaws. I hear no holds. Since there are no holds, we will be noting shortly on the four articles in this consent agenda. However, please note that because two of the articles require a two-thirds vote, in order to pass the vote on the entire consent agenda must be two-thirds. So I ask you to please vote now. Can we show the count out of the clock on the screen? We're kind of having a fight. Okay, Hundred nine, yea. Five... Uh, sorry. Yeah. Hundred nine, yea. Five, nay. That's two-thirds. So, motion passes. Moving on. This will be going to Slide Thirty-three. This is the introduction and then there will be a vote. We've... No, we've done that. On Slide Thirty-three. Article Two. Good? Yep. Article Two, FY 2023 Supplemental of Recreations for the current fiscal year.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Sill.
I move favorable action and that the amount of $376,000 be appropriated to supplement the following fiscal year 2023 budget lines covering corresponding fiscal year 2023 deficits as follows. For snow and ice removal, that $16,000 be transferred from free cash. For ambulance services, that $60,000 be transferred from free cash. And that for unanticipated special education expenses, that $250,000 be transferred from free cash. And that $50,000 be transferred from the Special Education Stabilization Fund.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing none, I want to point out that because this article requires withdrawal from a stabilization... Part of this article requires withdrawal from a stabilization fund. That requires a two-thirds vote and so the article must pass by two-thirds. Moved and seconded, please vote now. Hundred four to seven passes by two-thirds. Article Seven, Fiscal Twenty-Four, Omnibus Budget. Mr. Sickel.
I move with the totals for each department represented by numbered items appearing in the advisory committee's fiscal year 2024 Omnibus Budget Report for the town in column FY 2024, Advisory Recommendation, be called over by moderator and if no objection is made, that such amounts be raised and appropriated for the purpose specified. Except for that, where a transfer is indicated by numbered footnote, specified amounts shall be provided by such transfer. That the salaries for various town officers, including those indicated by numbered footnotes, be fixed effective July 1, 2023, as specified in the omnibus budget that becomes effective pursuant to this motion. And that any items which objections may be separately considered and disposed of in accordance with the vote of the town.
Second.
Okay. I will now read the totals for each department in the omnibus budget. As always, the full numbers for each department's salaries plus expected are printed in Advisory's Report to the Town in the column labeled Advisory Recommendation. Anyone wishing to comment on or question any amount may call hold when I read the department's name and amount and I will set that line out of the style. When the entire omnibus has been read, I will list the departments on which there has been a hold, if there are any, and we will then vote all the unheld items. Select Board, $362,520. Legal Counsel, $80,000. Assessors, $159,930. Treasurer, $100,323. Collector, $158,273. Finance Department Accounting, $327,776. Advisory Committee, $4,500. Conservation Commission, $10789. Planning Board, $56,408. Town Clerk, $164,050. Election and Registration, $24,945. Information Technology, $151,200. Town Buildings, $373,212. Sustainability, $72,635. I'll look at that. Fire and Rescue, $557,240. Ambulance, $232,500. Inspectors, $127,102. DS Regional School District, $11,209,598. Tri-county Votational, $19,664. Sherburne School, $70,925,571. Norfolk Agro-Poultry, $26,255. Deportment Public Works, $1,231,140. Snow and Ice, $88,799. Street Lighting, $10,000. Solid Waste, $344,050. Recycling, $3,230. Cemeteries, $89,500. Board of Health, $174,274. Council on Aging, $194,433. Veterans, $6,860. Library, $604,917. Recreation, $150,000. Historical Commission, $2,800. General Insurance, $248,174. Employee Benefits, $3,310,68. Debt Service, $1,878,384. Reserve Account, $300,000. Okay. There has been one held item. That is legal counsel. Am I correct that there are no other held items? There has been a motion and a second on all unheld items and we are now going to vote on those unheld items. So excluding legal counsel, please vote now. Motion passes, 105 to 10. There is one held item and that is legal counsel. Is there any discussion or comments on legal counsel?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would just like to raise an objection...
Excuse me, could you stick your hand?
I'm Paul Richardson, and I'd like to... I just would like to raise an objection to the legal counsel budget for two reasons. The first is we're budgeting tonight $80,000 and we have spent a quarter of a million dollars almost every year for the last ten years. And I don't think it makes any sense to tell the town we're going to spend $80,000 when we know we're going to spend more than a quarter of a million dollars this year. It's absolutely a fact. We're going to spend three to four times what the board is telling us that we're going to spend. And that's just not right. The second thing I'd like to object to is the fact that over the last number of years, we've spent somewhere on the order of a million and a half, $2 million for legal counsel to oppose affordable housing in our town and we have yet to prevail in any of those cases. And I presently object to spending money that way. Thank you.
Is there any further comment? There is no further comment. Therefore, Mr. Sill? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there someone? I can't see them. I'm sorry, Kathy?
I walked near you.
And where... Which address?
We live on Main Street. As far as the legal counsel remark goes, it's my first year reviewing the budget here but it looks like it's 200 pretty consistently through 2022. So I'm not sure where the other... Where would be the items? Any amounts that your former was mentioning where it would fall in the budget? That's just a further question, I guess. I'll leave it.
Does anyone wish to answer her question? Mr. Worldan or Mr. Lorenz?
It's on. Can you hear me?
Clear.
I'm Paul Lorenz. At 262 South Main Street. The way we have budgeted consistently...
We can't hear you, Paul. Could someone increase its mic sound, please?
Try.
Try again, Paul.
The town has consistently... The town has consistently budgeted a number at that level for a number of reasons. Number one, I can say as a town council myself and other communities, every community budgets a low number on the theory that if you budget a high number, that money's going to get spent. Number two, if you haven't budgeted at the same level, it provides more control by the community. Because when you go over, you have to explain why you're going over. You have to find the funds you keep from transferred from reserve fund from some other source. You have to justify why did you spend money? So it provides better control. The way that's done is pretty standard among communities in Massachusetts. So this is one budget item where you do not try to figure out what high number you might get through. Instead, this is a budget item, like Snow and Ice and others, where you pick a goal as to what you want to spend and you try to see if you can get counsel to that number.
So we had further discussion? All right, Mr. Sill.
I move favorable action on the legal counsel budget in the amount of $80,000.
If we can give a slide up for that.
Second.
Move legal counsel, $80,000. Move legal counsel, eighty thousand dollars. Okay, um, so this is the advisory recommendation, and I would ask you to please vote now. Motion passes, can you, if you can put the numbers up there? One oh six to eleven. On the eye, Article eight, that would be slide thirty-seven. Capital Improvement Plan. Each item in the Capital Improvement Plan tonight will be considered separately.
Madam Moderator?
Uh, Ms. Madam Rosa.
Uh, for Article eight, item one, the officer in charge vehicle, I move favorable action in that for the purposes of purchasing an officer in charge vehicle, item one is set forth in the Advisory Committee Report, including all incidental and related expenses. The sum of fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars be transferred from free cash in treasury. Said appropriation to be expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with unexpended funds as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, being returned to the general fund.
Second.
Yes, this is the first, um, line item on the, um, Capital Improvement Plan. I'm gonna invite, um, Town Administrator Jeremy Marseth to address this, and he's going to address all the articles, all line items in the Capital Improvement Plan at the same time. So if we can switch him to the other sub-slides up there, to the presentation slides.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator, Jeremy Marseth, Town Administrator. I'm pleased to provide this consolidating overview of the proposed Half-Wife Twenty-Four Capital Improvement Plan and projects included in Article eight. For context, the development of the Capital Improvement Plan is guided by town bylaw and the town's fiscal policies. Uh, the town administrator generally, uh, and their designees are generally responsible for the maintenance of, and repair of town buildings, facilities, and property. The Capital Budget Committee annually considers capital improvement requests and recommends to the town meeting. Uh, they also maintain a six-year look ahead of capital progress. Uh, over the coming year, I look forward to working with stakeholders to update and publish the multi-year Capital Improvement Plan and to discuss alternative, uh, funding mechanisms with the advisory Capital, uh, Budget Committee and this way. I, this is a summary of the seven projects that are included in this year's Capital Improvement Program. You'll note there's no item number five, that, uh, project is dropped. The total funding requested for this year is nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide is a summary of the proposed funding sources. It compares last year's funding sources to this year's program. This year, it's proposed to five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars to be funded from borrowing and three hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars being funded from free cash. You'll note, uh, the comparison to last year's capital program. Next slide, please. Item number one, um, we'll detail on each of the capital item requests. Item number one is proposed, uh, the proposed replacement of car two, which is a two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer. This is a first response vehicle used by the fire department. Uh, has high mileage and has mechanical and functional issues. Uh, it's proposed to be funded from free cash. Uh, I will note that in addition to, uh, this separately funded, uh, it will be the radio, the mobile data terminal. Uh, the fire chiefs identified almost twenty thousand dollars of grant fund to supplement this, uh, this request. Next slide, please. Item number two A is a proposed replacement of police vehicle fifteen thirteen. Uh, this also is a two thousand sixteen Ford Interceptor S V D. This vehicle is a first response and daily patrol vehicle used by the police department. This vehicle also has high mileage and mechanical and functional issues. The proposed replacement will be a hybrid Ford X one fifty pickup. Proposed funding is sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from free cash. And again, uh, the chief has identified some grant sources to fund the, the outfit of the vehicle and the radio. So in addition to, out separate from this proposed funding, uh, some grant funding will be used for this vehicle. Next slide, please. Item two B is the proposed replacement of police vehicle fifteen fifteen. This is a first response and administrative use vehicle for, for the police department. I note this vehicle has high mileage and three, began to defuse the light. The proposed replacement vehicle would be an all-electric Ford model E vehicle. Proposed funding is five hundred ninety, fifty-nine thousand dollars, three hundred from free cash. Again, grant sources have been identified. So in addition to this funding, um, to fund the radio outfit and the car outfit. Additionally, there's a potential grant reimbursement which would reduce the overall capital expenditure if we're successful. Uh, because this is an electric vehicle, we may receive a reimbursement from the Commonwealth, uh, which would actually reduce the overall spend, like we're requesting fifty-nine thousand, three hundred. Next slide, please. Uh, item three A, this is an annual request to, for permit compliance for the town's municipal separate storm sewer system permit. That permit is issued by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. The town is in its fifth year of a ten-year permit. Permit requirements have increased considerably over the last five years of this permit. Uh, this request funds consultant support for compliance with the permit. Uh, and this year includes annual requirements, training, captain investigations, and the completion of a foster management plan. That foster management plan is actually due to be submitted to EPA this fall. Upon approval of that, that plan, uh, the town in the future will be responsible to implement phase one, uh, which is identified in this foster control plan. And that, that planning includes the extra improvements to the stormwater system, adding some end-of-type treatment as required by the plan, uh, and required by the U.S. EPA. Those improvements will be, um, you know, like future capital requests to town meeting. Uh, and the draft plan, the draft foster management plan, we anticipate to have some public meetings with the community in, in the coming months before that's finalized. Um, but, uh, what, our projects identified in that plan would need to be completed by the town, constructed by the town by two thousand twenty-eight, or two thousand twenty-six to phase one, two thousand twenty-eight to phase two. Uh, the request is one hundred seventy thousand dollars funded. Item three B is the annual funding request for improvements to the town's fifty-six mile roadway network. A town, you know, a, a townwide pavement condition assessment was completed in two thousand and one and is updated annually. That assessment determined that the current condition of the town's roadways is considered to be fair, uh, with a rating of two point four-nine, that's a rating from one to five, with one being the best, five being the worst. The assessment, uh, that was conducted identified an annual roadway capital funding need to increase the town's roadway conditions over the last five years to a rating of two point two-five. This request of two hundred and fifty thousand from borrowing, supplementing the town's chapter ninety, uh, money stream received from the Commonwealth. The Commonwealth needs that identified funding. Next slide, please. Item four is the annual capital funding request for the regular repair and replacement of town buildings and related infrastructure to help keep them in the state of good repair. Among other things, this request is informed by the onsite insight of capital needs assessments that were performed in two thousand sixteen and updated in two thousand and one for all municipal buildings. This year, these great projects include a replacement of town hall roof, uh, energy, uh, efficiency upgrades at town hall, uh, replacement of the electrical service at the transfer station, which will enable us to, uh, move forward with some installed solar panels. We've got solar panels at that, that building. And includes repairs to the dry hydrant system that provides fire protection at the town hall campus. Um, this capital funding request is about two hundred fifty thousand, half funded by free cash and half funded by borrowing. Slide. And the last project identified, um, under Article eighteen, item six, is funding for the replacement of the energy management system at Pine Hill Elementary School. With, uh, this replacement completed, um, should this be funded, the school department will have upgraded all of the EMS systems and all other facilities. Pine Hill is the last remaining system to be upgraded. Uh, and this is funded by, worth of forty thousand dollars from free cash. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, John. And, uh, I just want to point out that, um, I wanted to thank Jeremy that he kept his presentation for, is it five, six? Um, items to less than twenty-five or thirty minutes. He could have used his whole. We had addressed them separately still. Appreciate that, and I'm sure everyone else does as well. So, uh, Billy, if I can have slide thirty-eight back again and switch to the turning slide, please.
Vote this slide before.
Uh, this slide before, first. I just wanna make sure people know exactly what they're, they're looking for. Okay. So this, uh, item one, Article eight, has been moved and seconded. You are voting now for the officer in charge vehicle only. Moved, seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing that moved and seconded, I ask you to vote now, please. Motion passes one eleven to eleven. Article eight, item two, hybrid pickup. Mr. Sipper?
I move favorable action in that for the purposes of purchasing a hybrid pickup, item two A is set forth in the Advisory Committee Report, including all incidental related expenses. The sum of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars be transferred from free cash in treasury. Said appropriation to be expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with unexpended funds as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, being returned to the general fund.
Second.
The item has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing that, we have the voting slide up there, so please vote now. This is a majority vote. Motion passes one oh five to twenty. Article eight, item two B, electric vehicle cruiser.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Sauer?
I move favorable action in that for the purposes of purchasing an electric vehicle slash cruiser, item two B is set forth in the Advisory Committee Report, including all incidental and related expenses. The sum of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars be transferred from free cash in treasury. Said appropriation to be expended by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, with unexpended funds as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, being returned to the general fund. Second.
The item has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? During that, I ask you to please vote now. This is a majority vote. Motion passes one ten to seventeen. Article eight, item three A, stormwater compliance.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Madam Rosa?
I move favorable action in that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of stormwater engineering, consulting, and planning costs. Item three A is set forth in the Advisory Committee Report table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt exclusion question, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section seventy, Section twenty-one C K.
Second.
The item has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? During that, uh, this is a two-thirds vote. I ask you to please vote now. Motion passes one oh six to nineteen. If you can put the percentages up there, that'd be good. Article eight, item three B, roadway management.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Sipper?
I move favorable action in that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of improving town roadways. Item three B is set forth in the Advisory Committee Report table, including all incidental related expenses, the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt-excluding question pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C K.
Second.
The item has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is a two-thirds vote as a borrower. Please vote now. Motion passes one oh six fifteen. If we can have the percentages up there. Article eight, item four, town buildings and facilities.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Sauer?
I move favorable action in that the sum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated for the purposes of improvements to town facilities and infrastructure. Item four is set forth in the Advisory Committee Report table, including all incidental and related expenses, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from free cash in the treasury. Said appropriation to be expended by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, with unexpended funds as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, being returned to the general fund. And that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow the sum of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt-excluding question, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C K.
The item has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second. Slipping.
Uh, okay, great. So now, the, the. So now, the item has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is the gentleman back there discussing this? No. Any discussion? Okay. Um, I would point out that this article has combined funding of both free cash and borrowing, and therefore, because it contains borrowing, it must pass by two-thirds. So I ask you to please vote now. Motion passes 111 to 15. If you can put the percentages up. Thanks very much. Article 8, Item 6, Pine Hill EMS Upgrade.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. LaRosa.
I move favorable action in that for the purposes of Pine Hill Energy Management System upgrade, Item 6 is set forth in the advisory committee report, including all incidental and related expenses. The sum of $40,000 be transferred from free cash in the treasury. Said appropriation to be expended by June 30th, 2026, with unexpended funds as of June 30th, 2026 being returned to the general fund.
Second. The item has been moved and seconded, and this will be a majority vote. Please vote now. Oh, sorry. Any discussion? Please vote now. Yes. People may have. So. All right, we're starting to count on clock now. Please vote now. 110 to 10. Motion passes. Article 9, Regional School Chapel.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Sickle.
I move favorable action in that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of replacement of rooftop air conditioning units at Dover Sherburne Regional High School, including all incidental and related expenses, pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement with Dover Sherburne Regional School District and the town Dover, the sum of $552,600 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21, C.K.
Second. The item has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing that, I ask you to please vote now. Now, this is a two-thirds vote as a borrowing. Motion passes 110 to 12. Article 10, Use of Free Cash.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Sickle.
I move that no action be taken.
Second. The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Remember, this is a no-action recommendation. If you support no-action, you will vote yes. If you do not support that motion, you vote no. Please vote now. 105 to 5. Motion passes. Article 11, Funding for Sherburne's 350th Anniversary Celebration to be held in 2026.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. LaRosa.
I move favorable action in that for the purposes of funding for Sherburne's 350th Anniversary Celebration is set forth in the advisory committee report, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $10,000 be transferred from free cash in the treasury. Said appropriation to be expended by June 30th, 2026, with unexpended funds as of June 30th, 2026 being returned to the general fund.
Second. The article has been moved and seconded, and we have a presentation by the illustrious George Frisk.
My name is George Frisk, I'm at 27 Hollis Street, and I'm very pleased to speak. This is the article that started. Uh, for any of you who are fortunate enough to have been living in Sherburne in 1999, you have an opportunity to really take advantage of a lot of very fun activities ready for all, young and old. It was a terrific year. I know I was here and quite involved, but many of you I know who are here tonight. Uh, we have another opportunity. It's, it's, um, it's coming up next year, not 2025, but 2024. And that is a celebration since the town's incorporation of 350 years. And I just wanted to make a few comments about that, just to let you know that, um, I hope certainly that you will vote in support of this. It's but in one day. And, um, and I want you to know that a committee has been working very diligently. Mary Moore has been chairing it. There's a good group of people, cross-section political town, uh, working to prepare various events and activities for 2024. I'm certainly hopeful that you all will, uh, one way or another, get involved. I, I also want to let you know that a website, uh, is being created. Um, there's been some partial funding for that, but we're looking for some more funding as really start-up money for our activities of next year. Um, and you will be made well aware of the website within a very short while. I think it's going to be up and running within a matter of a couple of weeks or so. I would also let you know that, um, what we, what we have seen in 1999 and in the 300th anniversary, 1974, was that the town in each of those instances did provide a level of funding to just get up and running, and we're simply asking you to do the same. What I also can tell you is that in each of those two previous celebrations, the, the, uh, the town was successful through various fundraising activities, entry-free, uh, fees, uh, sales of products, that we were able to reimburse the town in full. So in the end, the expense to the town was zero. Uh, and at the same time, we all had a lot of fun and enjoyed each other's company. So here's an opportunity now for, um, for you to do the same. I don't know, is there another slide? Well, that tells it all.
I'm going to be able to maintain your illustrious.
Yeah, that's it. And is there one more slide? Yes, there we go. So really, this is just a summary of what the, of the committee's goals, to really celebrate, celebrate the town and everything that the town has to offer. So I encourage you all to vote yes on Article 11. Thank you very much.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Are you okay, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
My name is Allison Mitchell, I'm in Coolie, and I'm a current parent. I live up on Coolie Street, and, um, I was a proud graduate of Dover Sherburne in 1999. Um, and I am very excited for myself to vote in favor of this motion. Um, I got to study archaeology in college, and I was wondering, so it's more a question than a discussion item, but I was wondering if our town could incorporate any sort of land acknowledgement in our celebration. Um, I've been present in meetings in grad school where that has been done, and found it very meaningful. Um, it's free and easy to do. Um, and I just thought that might be a special way for our town to acknowledge, um, the wonderful 350 years that we've had, and also look a little bit further back in history as well. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
I would just say it's so noted.
Oh, yes, thank you so much, Mr. Sickle.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, the article has been moved and seconded. And if we can go back to the turning slide. Okay, if you would please vote now. Article passes 120 to 3. Article 12, Combined Treasurer/Collector.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Sickle.
I move favorable action in that the town would authorize the select board to file a petition with the report to be special legislation making the elected office of the collector an appointed office, and furthers combining offices of treasurer and collector into one office of treasurer/collector. Such office to be appointed by the select board for a term after the three years. Such petition to include such additional provisions as the select board deems appropriate.
Second. The article has been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Uh, Jeremy, uh, the town administrator, like, um, presentation.
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator, Jeremy Ross, at Town Administration. Uh, the purpose of this article is, is to authorize the select board to file a petition for Massachusetts General Court for special legislation to accomplish two goals, one, to make the office of the collector appointed, and then to combine the offices of treasurer and collector into one office. The position of treasurer/collector would be appointed by the select board for a three-year term similar to other appointed positions. Uh, the concept of a combined treasurer/collector has been discussed by the town in various forms over the years. The combined role was recommended by, from, in studies from Sherburne's government structure and financial management practices. Um, there's several of them listed up here on the screen. The 2012 study of Sherburne by Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Division of Local Services states, "For due to parallel requisite job responsibilities and professional skill sets, we routinely acknowledge and encourage communities to combine the offices of treasurer and tax collector into a single appointed position as a way of streamlining operations. Having all receipts collected, counted, posted, deposited, and managed in the same office by one individual selected for his or her credentials and experience makes organizational sense." The 2019 report of the Government of Gasport, two reads, quote, "Laying for the transition to an appointed combined treasurer/collector. It is only a matter of time before the town transitions to have, as have the majority of the similar Minnesota towns, to have an appointed combined treasurer/collector position." And the 2012 best management practices published by the Department of Local Services says, "Over the last couple, uh, couple decades, more and more communities have combined these functions into a single integrated operation for the purposes of centralizing receipt processing, enhancing internal finance, financial controls, streamlining tax enforcement efforts, and reducing personnel." Uh, town meeting, may recall that in 121 of 2019, in our town meeting, the position of treasurer was changed from elected to an appointed position. Next slide. Here's a little informational benchmarking from similar communities. Uh, there was a study conducted in 2012 by the, one of the government, uh, organizational studies that showed that 75% of, uh, similar communities had a combined treasurer/collector position. Uh, currently, in 2023, that same group of 21 towns, all of them except Sherburne, have a combined treasurer/collector position. All of Sherburne's neighboring communities have a combined treasurer/collector position. And statewide, 80% of Massachusetts communities have a combined treasurer/collector position. Uh, proposed change would continue to provide segregated duties between a town accountant role and the combined treasurer/collector role. This would maintain the checks and balances required in all of sound accounting practices. Only the incumbents in the positions of treasurer and collector have terms that go into 2025. The special legislation would allow the incumbents to complete their terms should they wish. And, uh, this, uh, should help as well give some consistency, give, provide some point uncertainty. Next slide. Uh, this is a, a slide that just provides, provides an illustration of the current organizational structure of the town finance group versus a possible future stacking organization should this ever be passed. On the left, you see the current separate offices of treasurer and collector are circled in green. On the right, in the future organizational structure, you see that position as combined is circled in green. Uh, and you'll note in this structure, um, the future work track continues to have the town accountant and the treasurer/collector report independently with the town administrator. Again, this provides and maintains the proper segregation of units and all the best accounting practices. Other communities that have implemented this change have noted that they've seen that an improvement of customer service and have been able to afford to apply extended hours of access for their all the community. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Uh, I also, in this beginning now, I should have done it with the last article. I want to, um, ask the select board for their vote on the next series of articles. So, on this one, Mr. Walden. The select board vote.
The select board voted on this article for yes, one, no.
Is there any further discussion? The article has been moved and seconded. If we can switch back to the turning slides now. Please vote now. Article, uh, motion passes 95 to 26. Article 13, Amendment of Board of Trustees' Membership.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Sickle.
I move no action on Article 13. Second.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on this article?
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I'm Michael Volstein, I live at 28 Wiggly Street. I was, I'm not sure I'm going to get the order of this right, but I recommend that the seat would be moved forward for the session. I was on the select board, and sorry, I was on the advisory, uh, sorry, uh, for the session board for five years, chair for at least one, for at least two. My basic point is there are people who would like to serve. I'm not understanding this particular, um, membership. They would allow a member to be, uh, who's not necessarily full-time successor or somewhere else, to be able to serve and allow the select board to consider them if they're a member of the town. I might note, by the way, that we have numbers and actual issues that come before the town. And, um, there's no invitation to harm either the board or on the select, or both of whom makes the, made the decisions for the town. There is potentially a requirement that we go to EOR, uh, training, which I did, it was very expensive, and probably a hundred bucks. My basic point is, this seems My basic point is this seems like an opportunity to help certain, I mean, people like service on the board, all of whom at the time were service members, I thought, did a very, very good job. The questions were not overwhelmingly financial or technical related, they kind of stand, and there were one or two times at least where a help of the town seemed to be helpful. So, I'm not, I think, I'm not sure I'm going to get my order right, but I think what I want to suggest is that we go, we go against no action taken, so that action can be taken.
Thank you. Eric, and while you're there, Eric, if you could report the select board vote.
Thank you. Eric Johnson, twenty-seven, speaking for the Board of Selectmen.
No.
I can be loud anyway. Uh, Eric Johnson, twenty-seven, speaking for the Board of Selectmen. Uh, Board of Selectmen voted unanimously, five-zero, to support this article. Um, up until last year, the Sherburne Board of Assessors, um, was selected to be an election process, and like all election processes, um, it's blind of qualifications or background or what have you. We have personally selected out that there was no minimum criteria to get elected nor, um, even get on the ballot. Last year, the town being adopted, um, a provision of state law that allows the select board to actually appoint the Board of Select, uh, Board of Assessors, excuse me. However, this provision, it's standard on home room re, in-town residency. So really, it doesn't matter if they're in residence or not residence. A little unique. This differs really from all of the boards, committees, and commissions in towns, in this town. Well, the town meeting, the article before you, now allows a balance between the new Board of Assessors model and the tried and tested residency requirement like every other, I guess, board commission in town. This article promotes that only one of the three members of the Board of Assessors shall be preferentially a Sherburne resident, and do so only if they meet certain qualifications. If you look at, again, other appointed boards, look at conservation, zoning board, you might pick someone that's most qualified that doesn't have any minimum qualifications, unlike this by law. Uh, if they cannot find someone who meets these minimum qualifications, then they're free to choose another town. So really, it's just a preference. I want to make a, a small comment, tonight's consistent with what last speaker was talking about, as concerned as our residents have any relationships and personal knowledge of other residents. I mean, I don't find that justified, given that every other board commission, I mean, one could arguably say that conservation, um, zoning, uh, also appearing to select board can really make great impacts on an individual's individual property who are neighbors and who are, you know, friends and friends than a board assessors. So, I, I would urge you to, to not vote to support the no-action vote, although these double answers has, um, it will allow, again, a balance and provide that, you know, we wouldn't from one extreme elected for generations that really, you know, without, you know, without seeing no town residents. That's what I, thank you.
Andrew, was there any other discussion? It doesn't. The, the, go ahead, it's fine.
Nancy Hess, sixty-four South Main Street.
I had the privilege. Is this someone?
Yes.
Try the other one.
Nancy Hess, sixty-four South Main Street. Vote no on this motion of no action, please. I had the privilege of serving in the tax office for over thirty years, over twenty of it as your collector and part of the finance team. I know how important the work of the assessors is as part of the foundation of our whole financial system, and I know how important it is to have your voice at that table to help bring a sense of transparency and an understanding of how the results of their work affects us all. Facts you need to know, some of this already been given, the select board cannot use residency as a factor in hiring without a bylaw where the town can be exposed to legal action. This article provides that protection, yet is otherwise relatively benign. The duties of the assessors are prescribed by law, which is the case for most municipal positions, but there is still room for judgment, policy, and the legal responsibility of department oversight. The state does not require a town to hire any experienced assessors, never mind all experienced assessors. As was said, it does require that once hired, they take the online training and make use of the resources that help them execute their responsibilities successfully. Concern has been expressed that if there's a resident on the board, they may be subject to influence by a neighbor and corrupt the process. This board and every other board in town has always been all residents and neighbors, including the select board advisory zoning, and we have never seen rampant corruption anywhere. Quite the opposite, they have served us well. Resident volunteers continue to be the lifeblood of our representative government. In this case, if an assessor violates their oath of office, they can be fired. Please help keep town representation on this board. Vote no on the advisory motion to take no action, and yes to a new motion to take favorable action on Article thirteen. Thank you.
Is there any other further discussion? Robert?
Robert Johnson, two seven two Western Avenue. Uh, I was on the zoning board of appeals for nine years. A lot of people came before the board, some of them were people who I did not know, others were people who I did know, and I found that I could follow the bylaws, uh, well, regardless of whether I knew the person or not. And I think that other people in this town can do the same. Uh, if we don't feel so, then maybe we should eliminate the Board of Selectmen. Uh, and go to a mayor who is elected. So, if the Board of Selectmen, uh, can balance, uh, their duties properly, then I think that those on other boards can also balance their duties properly. So I would encourage you to vote no on this vote here of no action and to support the next proposal to have a change. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Throw.
Hi, folks. Fellow citizens. I'm Charlie Williams. I am hearing impaired, and I will offer one criticism for tonight's proceedings, and that is that you are not good about augmenting people's thinking. And it's very difficult for those of us who are disadvantaged to understand and appreciate what you are saying to us. I will be very grateful. Charlie Williams, I would pass my life in Sherburne. I was born in Boston, lived in a number of places, moved here from Missouri, and over forty years ago, lived on Russett Hill Road for forty of those, and the last five or six at Abbey Road Number Ten. And I've been reasonably active in the volunteer operations of this town, which are very important. Every, most of us in this room pay taxes. We realize that our entire town function is financed almost ab, absolutely by the real estate taxes. We all have skin in the game. I think it would be not prudent for us to now allow the circumstance where we could have three professional real estate connected people determining what this town should decide on the valuation of each of our properties.
Charlie, it's too many.
Yes, or, and I realize I'm going too long. I think it would be an imprudent act for us to not have a single skin-in-the-game resident of Sherburne on our Board of Assessors. So I strongly recommend defeat this motion.
Thank you, Charlie.
And pass the next one.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, um, this will, oh, and we, we've already heard from the board, so, um... This will be a majority vote, and remember, it is a vote on a negative motion. So if you wish to support no action on this article, vote yes. If you wish to defeat this article, vote no. Please vote now.
Madam Moderator, I think you may need to read the instructions.
I'm sorry. Kill, kill the vote there. Don't, don't erase it, just... What's the problem, Charlie?
I believe there's a little bit of confusion over here, maybe in the audience, on the way you phrase the question, I think it's one of yes and no votes.
A yes vote supports no action, and no vote defeats the article. Defeats the motion.
Defeats the motion.
So... Defeats the motion. You good? Okay. Leave it as is. No, no, this is assessors. No, not yet, you can't. Only one motion on the floor at a time. Only one motion on the floor at a time. No. You did not, did you vote at all?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the names have, the motion is defeated. Ninety-three to thirty-three, it's a majority decision. No.
I would like to move favorable action on Article thirteen.
A motion for favorable action on Article thirteen has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? So if you can put up, um, Billy, uh, the new slide, Article thirteen, that says, um, move favorable action on Article thirteen. That should have, we haven't voted yet, so... So if you wish to support the motion of favorable action, you will vote yes. Otherwise, you will vote no. Please vote now. Ninety-three, thirty-two, new motion passes. Article fourteen, land acquisition committee.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Marosa.
I move favorable action, and that the town votes to amend the membership of the land acquisition committee as further described in the warrant.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? And what was the select board vote on this? What was the select board vote on Article fourteen?
Article, uh, fourteen, uh, Article fourteen is, uh, board is, uh, in fact, is, uh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to correct, it's not the mic, it's the sample. Article, uh, fourteen is likely the...
Look at the mic.
No discussion, is that correct? Okay, then, uh, I ask you to please vote now, Article fourteen. Land acquisition. Article passes seventy-eight to eight. Article fifteen, amend general bylaw with respect to the capital budget committee.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Sucker.
I move favorable action, and that the town votes to amend chapter six of the general bylaws by deleting section three, the date of February one, and replacing it with December one, and in section five, deleting the cost of ten thousand dollars and replacing it with the cost of twenty-five thousand dollars, and as further described in the warrant.
Second.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Very nice, how did the selectmen vote on this?
This was also five to zero.
Yeah, do something about their minds.
He's up.
The sound that wrapped in the microphone does not gain the microphone, it gains the sound board in the back.
You're up.
Every time you look down at a page, you're not speaking into the microphone. So when you're reading down like this, the voice doesn't...
I hear what you're saying, so, pardon, on this article...
Precise.
Going five to zero in favor.
All right, so, Article fifteen, amend the general bylaw with respect to the capital budget committee has been seconded, there is a no discussion, I ask you to please vote now. Motion passes one oh-six to fifteen. Article sixteen, amend the personnel administration plan with respect to longevity.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Sucker.
I move favorable action, and that the town votes to amend the personnel administration plan of the general bylaws by adding a new section twenty-two longevity and, sorry, section twenty-two longevity, and renumbering the remaining sections of the plan to coincide with the new section as further described in the warrant, and that for the purposes of funding longevity reward stipends in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, ten thousand dollars be transferred from free cash in the treasury as needed to fulfill the specific obligations of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Said appropriation to be expended by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, with unexpended funds as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four being returned to general fund. Second.
The article has been moved and seconded, we have a presentation to be made. Fifty rolls. Vicki Relles.
I'll do a sound check first, can you hear me? Good evening, my name is Vicki Relles, I'm at nine Peckham Hill Road, and I am the Chair of the Personnel Board. The Personnel Board is sponsoring the warrant Article sixteen to see if the town will vote to amend the Personnel Administration Plan of the general bylaws by adding a new Section twenty-two longevity and renumbering the remaining sections of the plan to coincide with the new section and to appropriate the funds therefore for fiscal twenty-four. What is longevity pay? The most effective means of retaining employees included longevity pay increases, adjustments for market pay analysis, and professional development opportunities. Longevity pay gives workers extra money based on how long they've been on the job. The money is separate from raises and is not tied to performance or merit, which is, there is none at this time. Compensation is based on years of employment, distributed in two biannual payments following the employee's anniversary dates. What are the benefits of longevity pay? Longevity pay can help keep long-term employees at market rates, which can maintain their satisfaction with their pay level. It can be a way to show appreciation to employees who have stayed with the town for an extended period of time. Also of importance is the institutional knowledge that has been acquired over the years becomes increasingly valuable asset for managing the town's business. This is kept in-house by retaining and rewarding longevity. How was the stipend established? The board, along with the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, and the Finance Director, reviewed current town contracts, collective bargaining agreements, and similar towns' longevity plans. Once reviewed, a rate of pay was determined on a sliding scale from five to thirty-plus years. For fiscal year twenty-four, the total payment payout was under eleven thousand dollars. As many of you may know, Sherburne's town employees have been instrumental in keeping Sherburne running during extreme situations such as COVID, and also working for a significant amount of time without a town administrator. I would like to acknowledge our appreciation to all the town employees for their dedication and work during these times. Having this opportunity to establish longevity pay is one way the citizens of Sherburne can show our thanks for this dedication and commitment to maintaining Sherburne's municipal standing. Thank you.
Article's moved, seconded, there's been a presentation, is there any discussion? Motion passes, ninety-six, twenty-three. Article seventeen, accept state legislation allowing slower speed limits.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Madara.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to accept mass general laws, Chapter ninety, Section seventeen C, to allow the select board to establish low speed limits twenty-five miles per hour inside a thickly settled or business district on any roadway in town that is not a state highway, and to accept Section eighteen B of Chapter ninety of the general laws to allow the select board to establish safety zones with speed limits of twenty miles per hour.
Second. The article has been moved and seconded. Does the selectman vote at how on this?
We were, I thought we were five to zero on this article.
Is there any discussion?
Hi, my name is Carol Mitchell, and I've lived at one twenty-one Coolidge Street for more than fifty years. I think this is a great plan, but it requires enforcement, and in front of our house, the speed limit is twenty miles per hour, and no one follows that. I would love to have a little flashing sign in front of our house that tells people how fast people go, so I think enforcement is important.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Article seventeen, speed limits, please vote now. Motion passes, eighty-nine, thirty-three. Article eighteen, amend zoning by law, Section five point ten, ground mounted solar.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Sipper.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaw by deleting Section five point ten, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facilities in its entirety, and replacing it with a new Section five point ten as further described in the warrant, and to correct typos in Section five point ten point four by changing both references to the mitigation section in five point ten point five to be five point ten point fifteen.
Second. The article has been moved and seconded. How did the selectmen vote on this?
The selectmen voted four in favor and one abstaining.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I can't really, my notes, I just. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Is this? Is this under my question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Second.
All right, there we go.
Speak right into it, Will.
How about that? Here we go. So my name is Will Dunham, I'm a member of the Planning Board. I want to speak briefly in support of this warrant article. I know there's a really excellent summary in the town meeting notice, and I'm sure you guys have all had a chance to look at that, but I did want to say a few things. There's some sides, I believe, too. Do we have those?
Is that this?
So in nineteen eighty-five, the state adopted what's called the Dover Amendment. The Dover Amendment is a piece of legislation that protects certain land uses. Previously, it was educational, religious, and agricultural uses. It was amended in nineteen eighty-five to include its solar uses. Being a protected use means basically that towns are greatly limited in their ability to use zoning rules to restrict those uses. So as of nineteen eighty-five, solar was a protected use. In two thousand and eleven, Sherburne adopted a solar bylaw that allowed large-scale ground-mounted solar by right only on the landfill in town, and prohibited it everywhere else in town. That was never used, it was never challenged, nothing really ever happened with it. Flash forward to June two thousand and twenty-two, there was a Supreme Judicial Court decision in the case of Tracy Lane versus Waltham. An issue there was Waltham's solar bylaw, which restricted solar to areas zoned for industrial use only. So the only places you could build a solar, a large ground-mounted solar system in Waltham were areas that were previously zoned for industrial use, which amounted to about two percent of the land in Waltham. This is the first time that the SJC interpreted the Dover Amendment with respect to solar, and the SJC found that the Waltham bylaw unlawfully restricted protected solar use. The result of that was that the bylaw was invalidated, which set Waltham with no basis for regulating the placement of solar facilities in Waltham. Once that decision came out, planning boards all over the Commonwealth started to scramble to figure out how to respond, ours was included. We reviewed the Tracy Lane decision, we sought guidance from Town Council, a lot of other towns have started to implement bylaws, we've looked at those bylaws, we've looked at the Attorney General's rulings on those bylaws to see what other towns were doing about this, and what the Attorney General thought in terms of whether those things were compliant with the protected use of solar. And in response, we drafted a comprehensive new bylaw that was based in part on a model bylaw that was produced by the Cape Cod Commission. Our findings throughout this process was that the Tracy Lane decision makes Sherburne, with its current bylaw, vulnerable to challenge by solar developers. We also found that climate change goals are a top state priority and one that Sherburne has a reasonable responsibility to help achieve. So we paired this bylaw with the aim of both helping Sherburne and the Commonwealth achieve the climate change goals that are founded upon increased solar electricity generation, and also to strike a balance between town control over where those solar facilities can be sited in town and the parameters of the Tracy Lane decision, which again limits the town's ability to restrict solar uses. So we took sort of a two-pronged approach here. One was to expand the overlay district, the current overlay districts, and instead of just the landfill now, we're proposing to allow solar facilities by right along the power line right away in town. And then the second prong is to allow solar facilities elsewhere in town by special permit through a permitting process in front of the Planning Board. A couple of features. One is that the special permit process limits the size of facilities outside the solar overlay district to fifty percent of the size of the parcel. And the other important one requires setbacks of a hundred feet and two hundred feet where residences have left the site. Next steps here, this is obviously a developing area of law. There are studies underway through various different organizations to help mitigate the environmental impacts of solar, environmental solar particularly with respect to deforestation and impact on groundwater and things like that. So we expect in the coming months that there will be some developments in terms of new strategies to implement, to stay within the parameters of the Tracy Lane decision while protecting the town's interests in terms of trees, groundwater, other safety goals.
If you can wrap it up, Will.
Sure. I also want to monitor future Attorney General decisions to see what kinds of, what kind of bylaws are passing while steering, what kinds of bylaws are not, with the idea being that perhaps down the road we would amend the bylaw that we proposed here to be more or less restrictive in the way that complies with what the legal standards allow us to do, but I think it's important to adopt something now in order to get a measure of protection and avoid the circumstances that happen in Waltham where they're really left without the ability to regulate placement of solar facilities.
Thank you, Will. How did the selectboard vote on this? Did you already tell me? You probably already voted, this is the four in favor, or is that four? Oh, one to the team, okay. Thank you. Right, is there a discussion on this? I'm sorry, who is speaking? Okay, can you, can you, no, if you wish to speak, you need to go to one of the microphones? Okay, Carol, I saw you get up first, so go ahead.
Thank you. Third only area, two sixty-two Western Avenue. Article eighteen includes language that does significantly strengthen the town's ability to review large-scale ground-mounted solar facilities and reduce impacts and limits of scale. These are needed changes, but at the same time, the article creates a solar overlay district under the power lines running along the north and west sides of town, a habitat corridor that is nearly four miles long. This area will result to encourage large-scale solar development, that's what the goal is in the article. Both SDEP and Mass Audmon recommend the solar overlay district to be located in areas with low natural resource values. While the land under power lines may appear to be vacant or disturbed, these are actually stable plant and animal communities that have been maintained as shrub habitat by utilities for decades, and they foster remarkable seed plant diversity, which makes them important natural resources. In fact, Mass Audmon has named shrublands like these as areas of high conservation concern. And, for instance, the area south of Washington Street is designated as priority habitat and were increasing, and other areas of the utility quarter pass through wetlands and conservation lands. By opening up these lengths to solar development, the town could disturb and degrade, degrade nearly four miles of important habitat for pollinators, amphibians, mammals, birds, or thousands of dozens of species of unknown plants. And I noticed the planning board argued that the solar arrays could go above somehow vegetation, but in fact, a lot of the shrubs are six to ten feet tall, solar arrays shape the environment. It's currently very sunny, so it will very much change the habitat there.
The other issue. Wrap it up, Carol.
Thank you. The other issue is that the utility quarter provides recreation, include walking, hiking, riding, and this would be blocked by fencing that surrounds the solar arrays. So I believe the planning board should take this back through more review, they should listen to what the state's saying, what other towns get passed by the Attorney General, and bring it back to the town in the future.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Everett, I live on Prospect Street, been there for the last twenty-eight years. Solar energy is a wonderful thing for off-grid uses. Solar energy on the grid imposes some costs that are not so great. Other grid participants end up suffering for the addition of solar energy on the grid, and the reason for this is very simple. Unreliable weather-dependent inputs onto the grid require reliable generation to back it up, and those reliable generators get sidelined randomly on sunny days, making it harder for them to recoup their investment. And that's why unreliable energy sources are parasitic on the reliable infrastructure. And that's, that's bad enough, but there's another problem, which is, there's the environmental impact, you know, I stand to gain more than most people because nine acres of where I live could be, is a power line right away. So I could put nine acres on my lot in solar energy collectors, but I would never do that to the land, it's very beautiful. And solar energy in towns like Sherburne transfer the cost of electricity generation from those with more land and more money to those with less land and less money. And so people who have less end up paying more for their electricity than those of us who have more. And when bad weather arrives, as it inevitably does, the grid becomes less resistant when you have more weather-dependent inputs. So I also would encourage the town to go back and sharpen their pencils and consider a bylaw that would be more protective of our natural surroundings.
Thank you, ma'am. Chris, I'm going to ask you to go last because you're going to present the report. Thank you.
Kathy Beauregard, one sixty-two Western Avenue. It's just my understanding that if we don't decide as a town where to put the solar, the state of Massachusetts will come in and put it for us. So it's important that we have good discussions about this and be reasonable because they can come and just have eminent domain and put it right where they feel like it. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Eugene John, my family's lived on Brook Street for thirty-three years. I respectfully ask that the town, again, as said before, sharpen the pencil, be more specific about protecting our invaluable designated conservation land and wetlands. Department of Energy Resources, its. The Department of Energy Resources itself strongly discourages development of large-scale photovoltaic cells on bordering vegetated wetlands, and in fact suggests that towns can be specific in bylaws to protect our valuable lands. Secondly, we own property on the designated easement. I'm not sure that our property and especially abutting neighbors near this designated land have the right to our property if this is passed because we may be ceding control of our property to another source or a large-scale solar farm. So I strongly suggest, yes, we need to eventually pass a bill, but we need to protect our town's people. Thank you for your position.
Michael. Michael.
Michael Leser, 54 Forest Street. First, I'm just presenting as Chair of the Town's Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Can you hear?
Can you hear me now? How's this?
Bill.
Okay. Michael Leser, 54 Forest Street. At this point, just speaking as Chair of the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Your Energy and Sustainability Committee voted unanimously to urge passage of this article as it was important to promote solar energy for addressing sustainability and climate change, while at the same time it is important to have this revised bylaw in place now in order to make sure our town can better protect the safety, public health, welfare, and environment of the town. Since the state's legal framework regarding oversight of these large solar projects...
Excuse me, Michael, I'm sorry. Could I assist you or could someone assist you, this gentleman here who's in the aisle? Could we assist you in some way? Could we assist you in some way? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Michael, sorry.
Sure. Since the state's legal framework regarding oversight of these large solar projects is evolving, improvements in the bylaw can be made as we see what best practices emerge and then can be implemented by the town. Again, it is our view that it is important to improve this revised bylaw tonight so the town can substantively review how and where these large solar projects are implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. If you'd like to speak now, this gentleman here, would you like to speak now?
162 Western Avenue. The only thing I can say is that I agree completely with people who see the dangers of solar cells and large arrays. On the other hand, the present bylaw in this community leaves us subject to attack by fellow suits, not anybody who wants to do just the things you don't want to have happen because the way we have written our laws is exactly in contradiction with the conclusions of the Supreme Judicial Court with regard to the same issues involved in it. And we will not escape being attacked by the very people you are worried about precisely because we do not have at the moment a bylaw that will pass the snicker test in the Supreme Judicial Court. I think we have to make a decision now to support the restriction of the zoning of the solar cells to a place that we can tolerate, satisfy, place we can comfortably tolerate this stuff. And if you don't do something, you're going to have the whole town wide open. You get the chance to see what they want to do and they're going to get it by the Supreme Judicial Court.
Thank you.
I'm Richardson Lake Street. I'm going to be very brief because I more or less agree with what was just said, but I'll say it slightly differently, and that is, I commend the planning board for this article. I am very much in support of it. I actually don't think it goes far enough, but it is a move in the right direction. And it goes back to what I said earlier and what the gentleman just said, which is, if we don't pass this, we're going to end up spending a lot of money litigating and losing. And I don't want to see us do that, not to mention the fact that we should all find ways of being in favor of sustainable energy.
Thank you.
36 Mason Hill Road. I've been in town since 1986. I was on the planning board, I am on the zoning board repeals. I spent my entire career as a real estate lawyer, right in the middle of the to and fro of decades of fights over what we call Lulu's locally unpopular land uses. I'm sure this bylaw is imperfect. I really appreciate the efforts of Town Council and the planning board to put it together. The only decision for us tonight is if we're better off with this bylaw tomorrow morning or what we have on the books today. Our firm does a lot of work in the energy space. There is no solar developer who wants us to pass this because we would be worse off. Warren Buffett said, "When the tide goes out, you find out who's been swimming naked." He meant it in the financial sense, but legally, we are swimming naked, and I urge you to put on some gloves.
Sarah Frederick, 270 Washington Street. That was a hard act to follow. I live abiding the proposed overlay district, and I think I will be voting for this bylaw, but I just wanted to make a few comments. One is that I hope the planning board and the town will continue to be very attentive to the prior ownership issues, which do seem complicated. On the one hand, if EverSource were to decide that somehow solar arrays were part of the power transmission, part of our transmission, which I'm sure they don't think now, it's a little unclear where our rights as landowners under the power lines would stand. Also urging people to be aware of all the things that Carol talked about in terms of the habitat under the power lines, there is an image of this kind of bare wasteland, which I think we've helped to make people more aware of over the past month. And finally, it is unclear whether EverSource would allow solar arrays under the power lines, but that would be something to keep looking at as we go forward. I think those are all the moving things I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Longley Cook, 41 Whitney Street, and I have a question through you, Madam Moderator, to whoever is best equipped and sorry. Could I please get clarification on what allowed by right means in terms of the overlay districts? I think I'm feeling unclear about whether that means that ground-mounted solar is automatically allowed in the entire area colored in yellow on the map without any additional review by any town committees, et cetera.
Do we have someone qualified here to answer that question?
I think we do.
Gino here? Well, he may be qualified, but, oh, here he is.
As a right simply means that it does not require a special permit, it does not need, it's not subject to in review, it would still be subject to cycleary review by the planning board, and the performance standards for that cycleary review are specified in the bylaw. It's mostly the same review as a special permit, but the difference is, the planning board can't say no. It can't impose conditions that it comply with the performance standards. It just can't say no, you can't put it there.
Thank you, Gino. And to the questioner, I would point out that that was Gino Carucci, and he is the town planner.
By many, I was just asked to make another, answer another question about the rights of landowners. They're, most of that right of way is just that, it's right of way to electrical transmission, that's the only rights EverSource has. If the private landowners do not want solar arrays there, it's their land, they do not have to allow it. They would have the right to do it, but so they would have an additional option, but they would not be required, and EverSource would not have the right to put it there without their permission.
Next.
Hey, everyone. Brian Carrier, 9 McGregor. Moved here a couple of years ago. I am a solar developer. I'm a ground mount, solar developer, and operate in a couple of states. And I commend the planning board for this extremely thoughtful bylaw. There's a gentleman, a couple of people before me who said that solar developers wouldn't want the bylaw. I think it's a very strict bylaw. It follows the latest and greatest standards for what constitutes responsible development, and there's no better thing a community can have than a very thoughtful, very strict, very thought-out bylaw that's enacted and in the public domain as early as possible because it signals to the development community that the town, the planning board, and the CBA is very serious about development, and the developers should not come into town willy-nilly. It goes back to the overlay district under the transition line, I think it was very smart. Solar projects under 200-foot-high towers that cast lots of shade, very difficult to build. Also, to the person earlier who mentioned the native shrubs, that's not an ideal site for solar. So an ideal site is, you know, bad farmland that's not as productive anymore, or, you know, small overly grazed, overly cut forest that was a field 50 years ago. Nobody wants to operate where there's a ton of ledge, there's a ton of complex terrain that the utility didn't bother to create a hundred years ago. So I commend the planning board and hope that everyone votes to pass this bylaw and start a mandate for next year. Thank you.
Sarah.
Sarah, 170 Abbey Road, and I, my favorite thing with sex, move the glass three meters. That was helpful.
Yes. So to move the question requires a second. Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
There is no debate, no amending, and no reconsideration, and it takes a two-thirds So we will be moving now on whether to move the question. There is one thing I'm asking Town Council about this. The planning board is required to give a report on this, so does that need to happen before the question is moved? So we will be voting now on moving the question. This is to move the question, it does not involve for or against the original motion, but simply to, in debate, move the question. So please vote now. All right, so the motion to move the question, how else? Before we can vote on the question, we must have a report from the planning board. How the planning board voted, Dr.
The planning board was unanimous in their support of this article.
All right, so we are now voting on the article itself. So if we can get the voting slide up for Article 18. We're ready to vote. Okay, this is a two-thirds vote on this because it's a zone article. All right, please vote now. Okay, Article passes, 106 to 17, if we can see the percentage. It's six percent to 14 percent. If you will excuse me for one minute, I have a question for Town Council. Chris, you're still here. If you could, if you could step to the microphone for just a minute. When we did the consent agendas for, the consent agenda for Articles 20 through 23, two of those were zoned.
Yes, and the planning board was also in manning.
Okay, thank you. We just want to stop the record screen. Article 19, amend Chapter 26 of the general bylaws. Madam Moderator. This is my resolution. I mean, no exception on Article 19. The article has been moved and supplemented, and we have a presentation on this article by Michael Leser.
It's actually going to be Brad Coratlius on behalf of the Energy and Sustainability All right, so I'm in support of the Warren article for the opt-in specialized energy code. Before I kick this off, actually, I just wanted to wish my daughter Lulu a happy day today. That's a little late, so apologies for that. All right, so we can get going with this, please. Okay, and actually, you may as well just advance all the way to the end of this slide. I know that I kind of did it in sequence, but that's going to be a little confusing. Okay, so a couple of years ago, Massachusetts passed the Climate Act with one of the goals being getting the state to net zero by 2050. And towards this effort, about a year ago, they updated their building codes. Relatedly, Sherburne in last year's town meeting passed an emergency climate declaration with overwhelming support, which did include language on updating the building code for more rigorous building codes or adopting more rigorous building codes. And please know that building codes are actually your friend. It's a form of buyer insurance that we ensure that you're getting the safest, most efficient, comfortable homes that are supported by current building science and building standards. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so for some additional background, it's a little hard to see, but there's a lot of light blue communities in Massachusetts. These communities are beholden to the stretch code, just like Sherburne is. Uh, these communities are beholden to the stretch code, just like Sherborn is. We've had a stretch code community for about 10 years. More recently, um, this specialized opt-in code has been available to us. And already, uh, you can see some of these dark blue communities that have adopted it. There's eight on this map. This map is actually old, just as of last night. Arlington and Wellesley also adopted this specialized opt-in code. So now we're looking at probably close to 25% of the state's population that has chosen to adopt this specialized opt-in code. And please know that amongst these communities that have adopted it, Lincoln did it. And they're a pretty comparable community to Sherborn. Um, there's, uh, well over 20 other communities that are looking to adopt it. Next slide, please. You can just advance, I'll pass this. Yeah, sorry. Um, so we can just, yeah, go all the way to the end, apologies. Okay, uh, there's one more. Oh, actually, it's going back, sorry. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go with this then. Um, alright, so, this slide just concerns single-family residential homes only, okay? I'm gonna briefly touch on this concept of HERS index, which means a home energy rating system. Pretty much, the take-home message here is the higher the number, the less energy efficient the home is, the lower the number, the more energy efficient it is. So, back in 2006, that was a, that had a rating of 100. Um, if you have a rating of zero, you're a net zero home. If, um, and then, a couple of years ago, the Massachusetts state average was about a 50. Now, what I'm gonna be doing is comparing the stretch code we will, we are already beholden to, and will, and it's gonna update again in about a year, um, to this opt-in code that we're in support of, okay? So I'm just going to be explaining the differences between these two codes, that's it. Alright, there really are no differences other than new homes that are built using fossil fuels. That's what I'm gonna zero in on here. And the compliance pathways do differ by the size of the home. So for smaller homes, less than or equal to 4,000 square feet, if you're going to go with the HERS 42 compliance pathway, uh, the opt-in code additionally requires at least 4 kilowatts of solar on the house, unless it's shaded, and then you're, you're, you get out of that. But you also need to wire for future electrification, which is kind of a form of homeowner, homeowner insurance, really, uh, rather than having to, later down the road, when you want to install an induction range, the wiring's already there, or an EV, it's already there. Alright, um, if you go to a higher standard for these smaller homes, uh, i.e. passive house, all you need to do is wire for future electrification. Now, for the larger homes above 4,000 square feet, um, you need to install sufficient solar to go to net zero, and you need to wire for future electrification. So that's kind of the take-home message here. To, to me, what this does is it further encourages the all-electric pathway. There's no difference there, it's the easiest compliance pathway. And that's really what the state wants us to get to anyways, as the grid gets cleaner and we head towards, you know, inevitable, inevitable electrification. Alright, uh, next slide, please. Okay, now I'm gonna be dealing with multifamily homes. Could you advance once more, please? Or actually, a couple of more times, there's a few bullets there that the audience could read, uh, while I'm explaining this. One more. Great, thank you. Okay, um, so the take-home message for this slide for multifamilies is the opt-in code requires the passive house building construction, which, you know, as I said, it's more efficient than a HERS 42. There's other benefits too, but I can't really get into them here. Um, and if the, if the multifamily is built using fossil fuels, you also need to wire for future electrification. Now, this is really kind of a non-issue. Yeah, sure, sorry, I'm not being very efficient. Um, alright, so, passive house is heavily supported by state incentives. Um, so it's pretty much achieved cost parity of lower efficient homes. We expect builders to build this anyway, there's over 1,000 projects that have been built or being built with passive house. So this is probably gonna be adopted anyways by builders. This ensures that it will be adopted by, um, opting into the code. Alright, last slide, please.
No, that, we're done here.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Um, how did the select board vote on this?
On this article, the select board voted three, opposed, two in favor.
Okay, so, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Mike?
Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. There is, may you see this concerns about these additional requirements that possibly affect your tax rate and affordable housing. While I appreciate the conservative thinking about short-term hypothetical unwanted impacts, I do not think that this article warrants this approach, especially when we are already facing known and costly climate change issues and given that these modest practical requirements have clear benefits. Such concerns cannot deter our positive votes in other towns and have significant issues in the feedback from a large majority of state colleges, including 40B and other builders, and affordable housing groups. The specialized code additions are already a compromise between builders, environmentalists, and policymakers. They involve known construction methods, which is wiring and solar. Other towns, such as Lincoln, are trying to go even further by restricting oil and gas use in their homes. Climate change is clearly a very difficult issue that we have to do all together. And it is too easy to wonder what good will my small effort make? We have to sometimes space initial costs and then wait for much greater future benefits. I think that the vast majority of folks here agree that climate change is a big problem. More sustainable and efficient homes are more resilient, lower cost overall, better quality, they last a long time. Future residents deserve new homes that are better prepared for the future. There is not a lot of risk here and much to gain for our town. And partly for Sherborn to actively join all the other towns in the growing movement to show that we can tackle climate change step by step. Be hopeful, think big, even as we take our small steps. Please support this article by voting no to no action. It is time to act. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caleb Dolan, I live on Horn Road. I think, this is absolutely no shade to any of the presenters, but I think the best moment of any town meeting I've been at was last year when Ellie Hyde, I think that's her dad out there, uh, urged us to vote for a climate resolution, a climate emergency. And we voted overwhelmingly, and that vote was not, uh, let's be cute and kind to a kid. That was listening to children for what they want for their future. I think kids want a Sherborn where they can come back to in 20 years and swim in farm pond, go to Rocky Narrows. They're not asking us for what, the language is investment and more construction. They're asking us to take their future into account when we make decisions for them. And so I hope that we will vote against this and for the better building code. Um, and I would really ask that the advisory board, for every time that we talk to developers and investors, that I'd ask you to consider having a panel of kids from the community and weigh their voices in your decision as much as the finances. So, thank you, and wait to vote two and then vote one, alright?
Alright, thanks.
I also vote you, I, I also urge you to vote for this article. Oh, sorry, I'm Marion Neuter, 25 Prospect Street. Obviously, one of the dissenting votes, one of the two votes on the planning board that was in favor of this article and against a no-action vote. Uh, I vote, I'm supporting the article because I think it's good for the future of the town to be out ahead of what we know is coming in terms of new, new standards for building houses. We have a lot of old houses in Sherburne, it won't affect any of those. It won't even affect houses that were built this year. It will affect houses in the future. And I think we, we have an opportunity now to make a change that will make better housing in Sherburne in the future and will benefit new residents in Sherburne. It also may enhance the value of the whole town, because I note that, uh, other suburbs that are considered among the most desirable around Boston have already adopted this code, like Wellesley and Lincoln. And I say, Sherburne, let's be one of them, let's be on ahead of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Up there?
Yes, hi, I'm John Hyde, 23 Hill Street. And I'm just gonna speak through something I just got up there. So, one correction of our interpretation, it's actually been 10,000 certified passive house units in 2018, not 1,000. Um, so, again, just to reiterate, this only applies to new homes that are built with fossil fuels. Um, so, the new buildings built in 2024 to 2050 are gonna represent 27% of the existing building stocks by 2050. So we can decarbonize these buildings by electrifying them, it's quite an electricity with renewable energy, either onsite or from the grid. Uh, we'll basically have zero emissions from these buildings for the next 26 years. But that's a good place. Uh, so, I'm a certified passive house builder, I've been building net-zero buildings since 2018, all different shapes and sizes. And, uh, I can tell you from experience that the specialized code that we're talking about here is, uh, it's not really challenging or really that expensive. We're talking about additional wiring, uh, for the most part, in some instances, small solar systems on houses. Uh, 4-kilowatt systems, which aren't really that expensive in your overall price of a new construction home. Um, and so this is basically, this code is focusing on reducing operational carbon emissions for our buildings. That's, that's what we can, can control right now, uh, it doesn't affect our existing buildings. So, be small, choose, you're not gonna discourage, you know, in Sherburne, including 40B developments. Smart developers who know this are gonna, uh, they're gonna build this way anyway. And the ones that aren't are the ones that we should be concerned with. Uh, man with truck developers, those are the ones that, that's the reason why they build, make building codes, is to protect us from those good developers. Um, and we're not, we're not the first ones out on this news. Many communities, this Brad measures proposal, and there's dozens more people voting on this in all-town meetings. So, um, the entire economy's shifting towards electrification. Tonight, we approved a electric police cruiser. So, um, I don't think we should rely on our neighboring towns to carry some of that. We need to do our part to help Massachusetts decarbonize in 2050 emissions goals and decarbonization.
Can you wrap up, please?
Yep, two seconds here. So, uh, I think adopting this code might seem like a minor change, um, but we're in a climate emergency, it's urgent, it's an easy win. We should go for it if you believe climate change is real, if you wanna improve our housing stock and increase property values in Sherburne. And if you see Sherburne's urban footprint and emissions, you should vote no.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Paul?
Hi, I'm Paul Berensis. We should care about our planet. We should care about the future. We should care about our children. All of us here are stewards of our properties and our land. It will all go to the next generation and the generation after that. We need to take steps to make sure that they have the things that we have. This article leads us in that direction. I'm one of the two dissenting votes on the ballot selected. I voted to support this. A very important part of my coming to support this was the statement made by the sponsors that this will not apply to renovations. So those of us who have houses and want to do something to make our houses better don't have this applied. And the other point I would make is that this leads to higher-quality houses. Why shouldn't Sherburne have houses of higher quality than we had 20, 30, 40 years ago? The last thing I would say is, there is very little downside, there is tremendous upside. So let's take a chance. Let's vote for this article.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, Peter?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Peter Black, 55 Naples Street, Sherburne. Uh, we just recently did everything we could to go to zero carbon. We've taken out our oil burner, we've put in geothermal, we've added more, uh, uh, photoelectric cells on our house. And talking to the people who did the geothermal work, I suggested that, wouldn't it be great if we were building a house today? And what he told me was that builders don't want this. They don't wanna put in geothermal, they don't wanna put anything in that's at all different because they think it's gonna cost them more money. They think it's gonna cost them more money putting in more electricity or whatever. But if you have a code that says new construction has to be built, so this can be done, not that that has to be done, that's no longer an excuse for the building. It can't say, well, it's gonna cost more money. Building a new house, if it's built in a way that, that it can work carbon-free, that's great for everyone, if it costs a little more, that's okay, but they're not gonna be able to say, this is gonna double the price of your house. That's not gonna happen. Let's vote against this.
Is there any other further discussion? Okay, so, this is a negative motion on the table. So, if you support the negative, uh, if you support the negative motion of no action on this article, you should vote yes. If you do not support the negative motion, you should vote no. Okay, um, please vote now, this is a majority vote. Okay, motion fans, 81, 3. Michael?
Is it appropriate for me now to move? I move a favorable action on Article 19.
Okay, can we get a slide? Alright, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion or new discussion? Because it's a new motion. Are we ready? Okay. Moving favorable action on Article 19, please vote now. Article, the new motion passes. Now, if we can get the numbers on that, please. 8431. That concludes our business for the evening. Can I have my motion to adjourn? Second? Thank you very much.